Good evening. Hopefully you can hear me all right. I'm not used to being at this particular podium. I'm usually up there, but I'll do the best I can. First thing I'd like to do is have everybody back there move all the way up into the front. Just kidding. I've been at a number of meetings over the years where everybody sits in the back, with the exception of a couple people here. At any rate, this is School Board Candidate Information Session Night. As far as I know, this is the first time we've had something like this. I do think it's a good idea. As I told the person from, is it while in? Earlier, if they'd had something like this, when I ran for a school board, it would have been a lot more, it would have been beneficial to me too, because I ended up going out and trying to find people that had run for political office in the past to help me go through the process of what you have to do. So I think this is a good idea. And hopefully, in the years to come, we'll get even more of a group of people to come and see this, or hear it. At this point, you need to know that this is a coordinated effort involving CANDO, the Hazleton Area School District, the Greater Hazleton Chamber of Commerce, and Partners in Education. And as far as I know, it's been spearheaded by Mary Malone, right up here in the front. If I'm missing somebody, let me know now to recognize, but she's been the person that's been contacting me over the last couple weeks about this. So congratulations on doing a good job getting this set up. We have two speakers here tonight, and the first one is Dr. Janet McNally, the Director of LEARN, which stands for Leadership Education and Resource Network, and she's a member of the PA School Board Association. And when she's finished, we'll have somebody from, actually, the Director of the Luzerne County Bureau of Elections, Marissa Crispell, and she's going to talk about the rules and regulations of running for, actually, a political office. Dr. Janet McNally's presentation will be on School Board 101, which you see up on the screen. So without further ado, Dr. McNally.
I first of all, wanted to thank the Hazleton Area School District, CANDO, the Greater Hazleton Chamber of Commerce, and Partners in Education for having me here this evening, and all of you, thanks for being here today. I talk with school boards around the state, there are 500 of them, and when I do, when I do, one thing inevitably, when I ask school board members, "Why do you do this toughest job in public education? This sometimes thankless task? Why do you do it?" What do you think they tell me? What do you think they say? Hopefully, the kids, right here. They're passionate in what, they're passionate about what they're involved in. Anything else? What else comes to mind if you talk to a school board member long enough? They're concerned about kids' education and the future of our kids' education. Anything else? Right. Right. Anyone else? When I talk with school board members around the state, they say they're in it for the kids. And we'll talk about that reason in a few minutes. And I also want to say that when I talk with school board members around the state, they say they ran it because they thought they could make a difference. And that works for you, and sometimes it works against you, too. And we'll talk about those times when you have to, there's a give and take on a board, on any kind of board. So I'm just going to get started, and then if you have any questions, we'll have them at the end, if that's okay? Okay, so, what is a school board? A school board is a legislative body elected locally by fellow citizens to serve as agents of the state legislature. Right there is a genius thing, is a genius move by the founders of Pennsylvania, and the other states as well, that you have locally elected people who know the issues, who know the kids, who know the community, and, but they're also, they are agents of the state. They're agents of the state legislature. So while that job is not paid, you're elected, you're an agent of the state legislature, but you're local, and that's the genius piece of that. Each board has nine members. Members serve four-year terms without pay. One of the funny questions I get from people who don't know school boards that well, and probably I would have asked this a few years ago, is, "Aren't school board directors paid?" No, you put up with all of this grief for nothing, but the background, what you get from your service makes it all worthwhile, hopefully. So it's not paid, but this is, it's rewarding, and that's what I wanted to say. It's designated by school law to govern the school district. You have to be a citizen of Pennsylvania, of good moral character, at least 18 years old, and a resident of the school district for at least one year prior to election or appointment. You must also be a resident of a region if the school board elects school board members regionally. Do you do that here in Hazleton? I think not. Okay. So, but some school, some school boards elect on a regional basis. So that looks pretty good. Some prohibitions. You can't be a county official judge. In some municipalities, police can't run for any office. Can't be a local government officials. Can't be a district employee. Can't be a court or federal employee, and you can't be convicted of infamous crimes. Infamous crimes. I asked our, I asked our legal team, that we do have a legal team that's pretty great, actually, at PSBA, what's an infamous crime? And they gave me a list of definitions like this. So fortunately, I'm not going to read through them this evening. I have a presentation from our legal staff that I'll have in the back for you to answer some of those questions. "The General Assembly shall provide for the maintenance and support of a thorough and efficient system of public education to serve the needs of the Commonwealth." That's it. That's your mandate, to go forth and have a school board. They don't tell you too much about how, but we'll see that the state does tell you a lot of the hows you need to do. You are both local and state officials. Although locally elected, agents of the state, you're charged with responsibility of fulfilling that mandate of providing, you are seeing that there is a thorough and efficient system of public education. Your legislative authority, you have responsibility for establishing, equipping and maintaining elementary schools and such other schools as it deems proper to establish. There's at least one school board in the state of Pennsylvania that doesn't run a high school. So you don't have to have a high school, but it's a smaller school district, obviously. Many, but not all, powers that school boards may exercise to fulfill their responsibilities are part of what we call the Public School Code. And this is probably as good of time as any, is, we have a bookstore at PSBA. We have some terrific books written by our team of lawyers and others, and you can purchase those books as a citizen. So when you're on our website, go to bookstore, and you can read all about the things I'm, you know, if you're really interested in delving into the details. So those are available. Not them trying to sell you a book. And your, and your school board may have a book that they might be able to lend you, but they're available to citizens as well. Board member versus the school board. The nine-board, the nine-member board operates within the framework of federal, state, local laws and regulations. The authority of board is explicitly defined by law and regulation. This all sounds great. Now here's the hard part, and this is the part that board members, when they're elected, and sometimes when they've been in the seat for a while, individuals have no legal authority outside public sunshine meetings unless authorized by a vote or resolution of the majority. What does that mean? Well, what it means is that you're always a school, once you're elected, you're always a school board member, but the venue in which you exercise your authority is a public sunshine meeting called by the board. That's where you take your vote, that's where you deliberate, that's where you exercise your authority. Well, what if, what if my neighbor calls me and says, "You know, my kid didn't get into the school play, and I want you to do something about that." And that's a trap for school board members. What should they do? They have to remember that they have no authority, legal authority, outside public sunshine meetings unless authorized by vote or resolution of the majority. So what should that school board member do when they're being prevailed upon by their neighbor? "My kid didn't get in the play. I think you're on the school board. Do something about this." What should they do? You follow protocol, and you direct them to the right person in the district. And this is going to call upon all of your diplomacy skills that you've ever had in the world. You're going to have to very nicely say, "You know, that is a very interesting situation. It comes up frequently. Has your daughter talked to the drama teacher? Have you, I mean, taken that step to maybe talk with the appropriate person in the school district who can actually resolve your concerns?" And it's tough. It is, because you've just been elected, and you have all this power, and here's somebody from PSBA telling you, "You have no legal authority outside of public sunshine meetings." Well, you have a lot of authority. You're a school board member, and your vote is your authority. Your ability to advance an idea and debate it, deliberate it in public, and vote on it, that's your authority. And you dilute it every time you take a call like that and hop to and do something that you shouldn't be doing. Everybody okay with that? Everybody with me? Okay. There's a board reorganization during the first week of December. Elected school boards meet or organize. They elect officers then, so you'll sometimes see in the newspaper, a person who was a school board president for a while, now they're stepping back, they're a school board member, and somebody else is the president, somebody else is vice president. It's a reorganization. To whom is the board responsible? Above all, students. That's why all of this is here. That's why you're here, too. Their parents, to all of the other members of the board, and then you've got, you've got a special duty toward the superintendent and staff as well, but we have students there first for a reason. That's why you're here. The Commonwealth of your community. A couple of you said, you know, about that schools are so important to the community. They're the cornerstone of the community. And the older I get personally, the more I see this, as the, as the grades go through, and kids graduate and come back, and they say how much their public school education meant to them. Some people bash public schools, but let me tell you something. People are successful in life because of public education, not in spite of it, because of it. And as I say that, going through everybody's mind here is probably 100 kids that you've known who worked successful because they graduated from this school. The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the Pennsylvania Legislature, and really, it's no, it's no overstatement to say, "This is the future of our nation we're talking about." So it's an awesome task you take on when you run for school board and you're elected. The balancing act on most boards is, there's a balance. Some members want to go back to basics and try to keep taxes low, and that's important. You know, you have people in your locale who have a tax burden, and so they're saying, "Go back to the basics. I can't afford another tax increase." Then you have people on the other side saying, "We need to invest more. Students need new skills for the future." Who's right? They're both right, really. You have to come to that middle. You have to come to that balance, again, for your community. That's what you need to do. What do boards do? Make policy. Now that sounds like something you could just kind of fly over, but let me tell you something. You make policy. Policy is your legacy to your community as a school board member. Once you have served your time on the school board, and then you retire, and, you know, and you're, you're old and gray, and you're sitting in front of the fire with your dog, you know, and you're thinking about your life, you're going to look back and say, "Those deliberations, those votes, that policy has endured all of those years." Policy is then your legacy. It's the rails that the board run on. You select a superintendent. Awesome responsibility. And not only select one, but you manage their performance throughout their tenure. You focus on students, plan and set goals, adopt a budget, staff, and you are responsible for your own continuous board education. That's what I do at PSBA. I'm responsible for board education. And I see boards all over the state who are calling us all the time. "Do you have a class on this?" "Online? Can I take a webinar?" Because they know how difficult of a job this is, and they need the education. Adopt instructional programs, determine school facility needs, engage the community. Here's one, and before I came to PSBA, I thought, "Oh, engage the community." That just means tell the community what we're doing, right? No. I read something from the National School Boards Association, and it was also co-written with the Oregon School Boards Association, and they said, "Community engagement is all about one question. What must this community be like in order for all students to achieve? What must the community be like for all students to achieve?" That turns it on its head. It's not about communications. It's not about public relations. It's not about talking to the community when you need them for a vote. It's getting into your community and letting them know that they need to solve their problems and use all of their resources so that all students can achieve. You advocate. You have an adjudication role within your responsibilities of the board, and you establish board operating guidelines as separate from policy. So board operating guidelines are the guidelines under which the board actually operates. What don't boards do? Well, you'll laugh at this one. Check out staff during the school day. You know, we hear these funny stories, or we read about them, about board members who go into classrooms, check out, you know, check out the instruction, talk to teachers, inspect for co-compliance, attend parent-teacher meetings with parents, assure parents, "I'll take care of it," and instruct the staff. These are things that you definitely don't do. Because why? I mean, I was elected. Shouldn't I be doing these things? Why wouldn't you do these things? Anybody? Yes? You only have... Perfect, yeah. You only have authority when you meet in public, and if you started doing these things, well, what's, what's the other problem? The chain of command. So you hire someone, and that's called the superintendent, and that person does all of these things, as far as they're the top of the chain of command. They're the CEO of your school district. You would no more check out staff during the school day and inspect for co-compliance and walk up on the roof and see what holes need to be patched. I've heard that one, too. You would no more do that than if you were on the board of Fortune 500 company and walk into somebody's office and ask them what they do. You see that things are being done, but you don't see to it, you know? You have a superintendent and all that person's staff for that. Oops, words in legislation. Be aware that a great number of laws affect school district, and that's part of the packet that I'd like to offer you. A few legal requirements imposed upon school boards. You make decisions at public meetings. You adopt policy. You adopt an annual budget by June 30 for the new fiscal year, and you approve textbooks between April and August. You hire or renew a superintendent for a three- to five-year contract, approve hiring of all staff. You hold hearings for possible dismissal of a professional employee or the expulsion of a student. Most surprising discoveries about board service. The amount of time it really takes to be effective, to really read everything in your packet, or what's mailed to you, to really read the policies and understand it. You might be engaged in board meetings about 20 hours a month, but that's not where your service ends, that's where it starts. So there's a lot of time that you need to commit to really be effective, to really be effective. There's a tremendous variety of concerns with which the board deals, and a lot of board members will say to us, "I don't know, we got involved in all this stuff. I mean, you told us, you told us we weren't involved in this, but what we're doing is enough to do." An abrupt change from citizen status to board member status. You are a board member, and you always will be in the eyes of the public. And here's one, that the negative perceptions about the district were incorrect. You know, once you get into the, your board service, you find out things that might have been said to you that you may have believed once, now that you've gotten into the details aren't quite true. Board-related paperwork, mismatch between initial assumptions and actual roles, responsibilities, administration, and operating school district. And here's one, the difficulty in accomplishing individual platforms that led you to running. Remember I said, when, you know, people say, "I ran to make a difference." That's great, but some people run because they have their own individual platform. They get on a board, and suddenly, "I can't get this all done. You mean, I have to talk to all these other eight people and gel as a team with them? That's what I really had to do. Oh, okay. I'm not so interested in this now." Or, take the opposite. "Now I am really interested in this, because this is what I've decided to do, and now I'm going to work as an effective team." No individual power or authority. Determine your function, how to accomplish it effectively. You always have a lot to learn. I've talked with board members who were on their boards 10, 15, or longer years, and the most effective people I've talked with have said, "I have a lot to learn." And I read the publications that PSBA and others come out with, and I'm always learning something. The lifelong learner, it's just a great role for you. Recognizing the difference between setting and administering policy. That's that, that's that difference between what the superintendent does and what the board does. Accepting that you represent all students. Decisions must be made in the best interest of the total system and not special groups. You are there for all students. Learning how to respond to complaints and concerns. And the other thing is, that people often tell us is, "Change comes slowly." And it's, it's difficult to accept, but once you're on a board and you like that role, you can see change happening. But at first, you have to accept that change may come slower than you think it will, and that you can't solve the problems all alone. You have those eight other school board members and the superintendent. You are the team of 10, and it has to be an effective team for this thing to work. And so, one of the things you're going to be working a lot on is teamwork. Try the little power button, I'm afraid to. Well, while we are, oh, thank you, okay. Work for what you believe. Despite everything I've said, and probably because of it, one of the things that school board members do is, the good ones, and I would say, everybody I've met is a good school board member, is that you work for what you believe. How do you do that? Arrive prepared to meetings. Do your homework before you arrive. Here's another one. You start to, to get really involved in the literature and the, and the stories in the newspaper and other, and other venues about current education issues, because what happens at the national level, at the statewide level, will affect your school district. And so, you may be called upon to speak, and your knowledge of these issues will be very helpful. To the extent possible, attend all board meetings. And the other, the other key is, meetings run by parliamentary procedure. And so, if at all possible, pick up, if you are elected, pick up a copy of Robert's Rules of Order. It's dry, and it's really boring, but it is the way these meetings are run, and if you've attended a school board meeting, you'll know that that's the way the meetings are run. So it's helpful to know just the rudiments of Robert's Rules of Order. Learn to get and present facts, not just interpretations of them. You'll get the raw data, and so it comes down to what you think. And so you want the facts, and when you present an issue, you want to present facts, because the other school board members will be weighing those issues in their minds. Devote time and thought and study to proposed actions, and consider all alternatives, just like a board member would do in any situation. Encourage ideas and opinions from students, staff, and citizens. I see you have a student member of your board here. That's a great way to do that. It's not the only way. Try to incorporate their views into your deliberations and decisions. And work with the board to establish effective board policies by which the superintendent can administer the schools. Policy is your legacy. Fair and equitable terms and conditions of employment and evaluation for all school employees. You're going to be involved in adopting an instructional program that meets the needs of all students, and you're acting as an advocate for schools and children. Work for what you believe. Set high expectations. There is a study, and it was written several years ago, and the study was created by the Iowa School Boards Association, was called "The Lighthouse Study." So you can, you can search engine "The Lighthouse Study" and read the actual study. And since then, there's been a "Lighthouse Two" study, and even a "Lighthouse Three." What did Lighthouse say? Well, they talked about the characteristics of effective boards, and one of the main findings of that study was that boards that weren't that effective, and by the way, effective meant the effect that they had on students, what they found was that if a board was accepting in their belief, what that meant was that, they said, "Here's our students, here's where we are, here's our demographics, we can't change, this is what we have to work with." That's called an accepting belief. An elevating belief, on the other hand, were board members that came in and said, "Here's who we are, but we can be better, and we are dedicated to all students becoming better." That's an elevating belief. The boards with elevating beliefs, their school systems did much better. So I encourage you to look up "The Lighthouse Study" from the Iowa School Boards Association and read on about that study. Keep the board's primary focus on the best interests of the students. I just wanted to do a one-minute commercial about the Pennsylvania School Boards Association, it's the place I work. We're in, near Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, we're the oldest school boards association in the United States, formed in 1895. We're committed to playing an active leadership role in public education, dedicated to strengthening the role of school directors as community leaders. I called PSBA 75 people who are all falling over themselves every day to answer the phone and answer email inquiries and help school board directors become better. It's a remarkable, remarkable organization. We published something called "The Standards for Effective School Governance and Code of Conduct." When your school board adopts these standards, they become that board's standards for effective school governance, for effective school governance. More than 80% have adopted those as policy, and some school boards have adopted them as resolutions. So they are. Advocates for a thorough and efficient system of public education. Have we heard that recently? Yes. That's exactly what you do. Models responsible governance and leadership. Governance through policy. Ensures that effective planning occurs. Monitors results, and communicates and engages with the community. Exactly what we've been talking about this evening. If you are elected, be sure to check out Daily Edition. That's a daily synopsis of news about public education around the state and elsewhere. We have a video edition coming out, it's about every two or three weeks now. I was featured on Video Edition a couple months ago, and then the new one coming out I'm talking about, some innovations we're doing in learning for school board members. We have a PSBA Bulletin, Legislative Update, Research and Evaluation Services. We have a Risk Management Newsletter, and we're all over Twitter, Facebook, and LinkedIn. So that's what my, what my presentation is all about this evening. Again, I'm very happy to be here, and if you have any questions, we'll try to answer them. Yes? Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
At this time then, we'll have Marissa Crispell come up.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm surprised I actually made it all the way to Hazleton without getting lost. Last time I came up here, my GPS had me clear on another side of a highway, so I was very excited when I called Mary, and I'm like, "I'm in the parking lot." I did bring with me tonight petition packets, so those of you that are interested in running for school board, I do have petition packets here available for you. Everything inside of the petition packet is self-explanatory. I do provide step-by-step directions on what you need to fill out, how you need to fill it out, when you can start circulating. Petition packets are available in my office as well. Petition packets are available in my office as well, but I did bring 15 with me. For city school director, you need 100 signatures. You are able to cross-file. That means if you're a Republican, you can also receive Democrat signatures. You just need to make sure that your circulators that are receiving Democrat signatures are indeed a Democrat and your Republican signatures are being received by a Republican. Along with your petitions, in your petition packet, you'll also receive a piece of paper. This piece of paper is basically for my office in order to get ahold of you. Also, it will show me how you want to appear on the ballot. Say your name is James and everybody knows you as Jim. You would put Jim, whatever your last name is, Smith. And that's how you will appear on the ballot. Now, say your name is James and you want to run as Skip. There's a whole other paperwork that is involved with that. So if you do need that, I did bring those forms with me as well. I also brought along with me campaign finance. Everybody loves campaign finance. If you are going to be a candidate and you do not expect to spend or receive more than $250, you do not need to file campaign finance. If you are intending on forming a committee, all of your paperwork and the law included is in this packet. So even if you have the inkling that you're going to either form a committee or you will be expending or receiving more than $250, please take a packet with you. Is anybody here running for city office? No. I thought I might get some stragglers for city office, so I brought some of those petition packets as well. We cannot start circulating and receiving signatures until February 17th. Do not start receiving signatures until February 17th. That's very important. Make sure when you start circulating your petitions, you have all of the information filled out at the top of the petition. And this is actually the first time I've ever been invited to speak at a candidate's night, so thank you, Mary. I'm actually excited about this. If I, if I would have had more time, I would have done a presentation, but... This is the area you need to make sure you have filled out before you start receiving your signatures. You want the people that are signing these petitions to know exactly what you're running for, where you're running, what party you are. There's even a place on here, what your occupation is. Okay? So make sure that is completed before you start receiving signatures. When you fill a petition, there's 107 lines. A lot of people question on how the signature and the name should be appearing. They should sign and print their name as they are registered to vote. There's also a place on here for their street number, their street name and their township, city or borough. They do not need to put PA and the zip. Hazleton City is sufficient enough. Okay? And then also the date that they signed. So please make sure it is after, or on February 17th. Do not receive signatures before then. You have until March 10th to start to receive your signatures and file your petitions. Okay? On the back of the petition, there's a place for the circulator. This is if you are not circulating the petition yourself as the candidate. Please remember, Republican circulators receive Republican signatures, Democrat circulators receive Democrat signatures. Okay? There's a place for the candidate. This is all signed in front of a notary. Everything on the back of the petition must be signed in front of a notary. Do not forget that. Your, your petition will be rejected if it is not notarized. Okay? If you do not intend on receiving or expending the $250, there's a place of waiver of expense on the back of the petition as well. This is where you will sign that. Now, say you sign that in front of the notary, you get it notarized, you file your petitions. And then you know what? Lo and behold, you start getting a lot of people saying, hey, I want to donate to your candidate. At that point in time, you can then open a campaign finance. You as the candidate do not need a committee in order to expend money on behalf of yourself. Okay? I think that's pretty much it. We do have street lists available in my office. Street lists, we can receive them in either an electronic format. If you receive it in electronic format, you can take it home, you can open it up in Excel, you could sort the, the columns however you see fit. Or you can also receive it in a paper format. You file your petitions with my office. If you need street lists from Carbon or School Hill, you would have to get that from them. Okay? But you, you receive all your petitions, you file your petitions with my office. Last but not least, our statement of ethics. If you are currently a school board member and you filled out an ethics form for your school board, when you file your petition, you need to, in addition to that one you've already filed, you need to file another one because you now are seeking candidacy. If you do not hold a position already with the school board, you will have to file this as well. The Ethics Commission no longer provides Carbon copies, but you do need to file two copies. One with my office and one with the school district. So when you fill this out, make a copy of it and file it with the school, school district within 48 hours of filing your petition with me. I think that is... Any questions? Do we want to... I'm, I'm done. Yeah.
Very good. Thank you. Yeah, that's good. You did good. If anybody does have any questions, because we're being televised on Channel 99, you didn't know that, but we are. We have another live microphone on the other end. You'd have to go up there to ask your questions so that you can be heard on the TV. Anybody have any questions? Yeah, that one there where, where I think it's where Mr. Slusser normally sits.
Ms. Crispell, just to clarify, when you talk about cross-filing, you're talking about 100 Democrats, 100 Republicans?
Correct.
Okay? And one thing that we've run into, I've been in, on the school board for a few years and when you run, there's a bad situation where your husband says, well, I'll just sign for my wife and me. That's, if I'm not mistaken, that's not legitimate. You have to have each person signing individually with his signature.
Exactly. And the circulator is also swearing that they witnessed each individual person sign that petition. So say you're having a candidate announcement night and you have petitions there for people to sign. Please make sure that your circulator is standing by those petitions, witnessing all of those individuals that are signing those petitions. You will have petitions thrown out if somebody challenges signatures on your list and that circulator did not witness that individual sign that petition.
Okay. And one final item. When you are, when you circulate petitions for Democrats and Republicans, the total has to add up to 100 or perhaps a few more for safety's sake, if any were thrown out.
100 Republican, 100 Democrat. I would definitely say shoot to get more than 100, just in case some are thrown out if somebody challenges you.
So how many petitions do you give to each candidate to start with? I realize you can get others later, but if I'm having four people circulating petitions on the Democrat's side, do I have enough in that packet that you're giving me to be able to circulate, to have four different circulators do the job?
No, I do not. But we can't, you are able to make copies of the petitions before you start circulating them. Just make sure they're front and back and they're on legal-sized paper and you're not omitting any of the print on the actual petition.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions with Dr. McNally?
She had a slideshow.
Thank you for coming out. It was great to meet you all. Dr. McNally, I knew that you had mentioned that you had other information under the cover.
I do. And I'll, I'll have this on the table in the back. So if anybody is interested. Thank you all for coming out. It's been great to meet you.
Thank you.
[applause]
[inaudible]
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 [inaudible]